Peggy, you can put yourself on mute if you want to for a little bit. And it's up to you. We can just hear a little bit of background noise.
Yeah, I just did. I'm trying to fill my water bottle.
Sounds good.
All right, at 6:30, we will call the October 11th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. And just real quick for the record, we do have Councilmember Wagner, who is joined via Zoom tonight. So with that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. With that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will open up for public comments. If there's anything that anyone would like to discuss that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. With that, maybe it will take us to six, the Proclamation for Pregnancy and Infant Loss Day.
Mayor Dodge and Council, in front of you this evening is a request to consider recognition of a proclamation. The proclamation would recognize October 15th, 2021, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. The request was submitted by Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated. They are an organization that works with thousands of people across Minnesota and the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy or through early childhood. On October 15th, 2021, and other previous years, bereaved parents remember these children annually with a 7:00 PM candle lighting. Others choose to remember in their homes or in small gatherings. So with that, I am looking for a discussion on the proclamation that is presented and a decision on how to move forward.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the proclamation declaring October 15th, 2021, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the City of Mayor.
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion.
We have a motion from Wagner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. So on October 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And October 15th is a day of remembrance for pregnancy loss and infant death, which includes, but not limited to miscarriage, stillbirth, SIDS, and the death of a newborn. Too many families grieve in silence, sometimes never coming to terms with their loss. The significance of this day is to recognize and raise awareness of the prominence of pregnancy loss and infant death with an aim to support families who experience death of their children and to increase awareness, remembrance, support program, and services for families who experience bereavement. Bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October 15th with a candle lighting at 7:00 PM. Some will remember their child or children in their homes, while others will remember them in small gatherings around the state, across the nation, and around the world, and would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And in honor of these children that die each year, the City of Mayor declares that October 15th, 2021, be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Mayor on October 15th, 2021, will be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Thank you for that. Maybe if we could go to 781, the Veterans Memorial Update, please.
Okay. Mayor Dodge and Council in attendance this evening is Stan Halt with the Carver County's Veteran Memorial with the request to address the council and provide an update on the site located in the City of Mayor on the southwest corner of Ash Avenue, also known as State Highway 25 and First Street, otherwise known as County Road 30. They have an up, he has an update on the site and future plans that they are considering.
Perfect. Welcome, Stan.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Have you got the insert in your package there on it? Okay. So I'll just, I'll just go over it real, real quickly. It can, it's pretty understandable. The site, the memorial is there. It's been well received. Lot of, lot of visitors to the memorial itself. One of the things that we have done on the memorial, there is the panels with the saluting soldiers. And we have just put voice to those panels. So there's a, we have an image in one of the windows that you can take your phone and take a picture of it, and it'll bring up the site. And you can then say Army, or you can pick Army. And on that panel, there's images that go all the way around a soldier. Those images all mean something. They come from some segment of our, of war, World War II, World War I, Korean War, Vietnam. And each one comes from someplace. Some, some are from actual battles, some are training sessions. But this narration will now tell you what each one of these images are. So we've got three of them done. The other three, hopefully, they're just going to be done here shortly. So, so that should be a neat and a big improvement for anyone that wants to get over there and take a look at it. The museum case itself, which is in the center, is changing. We've had it pretty much the same with a POW display in it right now. But we have in the works to where we're going to have a Soldier of the Month. And this would be a deceased soldier. We would fly, there would be a ceremony where we would take their coffin flag from the family. That would be put up, that would be flown. And their bio would go into the museum case. And then the, the end of that month, that flag would come down. Then the next families would be there. There'd be a ceremony that would go with it. So, and then we'd take one down, put the other flag back up. So we're in the works trying to get all the fine points of that done, and then that'll be put in place. The first people that would have their flags flown would probably be those that would be in the paver gardens right now. There's, there's about 400 soldiers that we have in the paver gardens. We have to consider ourselves pretty special here in Mayor because we have soldiers from California, Colorado. I know I got one from Texas, Pennsylvania, Illinois. Of course, all over Minnesota, and of course, a lot of Carver County and the surrounding area. Pavers are, oh, every week, there's always a number of pavers that are coming in. We're, we've completed two gardens and we've got two more ready to go. And we'll be probably putting an order in for some, for some pavers again here now, within the next, within the next couple of weeks again. So we figured out a way to where we don't have to go with a whole garden that we can, we can do 16 at a time. That would, that way we don't have such a long wait for these soldiers that have purchased pavers until they actually get in. So, and then the unique thing with it, if you're not familiar, is that each paver, each soldier that has a paver in there can then submit their story into the registry, which you can, anybody can pick up to go to the computer, the magic box, and, and type in Veterans Memorial. And they can put in a soldier's name, they can, and, and get it directly that way. Or they can put in Army and find all those that are in the Army in, with pavers there. We have soldiers from the Civil War that are, that are in there. All the way up to pretty much just about, not a lot of Afghanistan right now yet, but we got some Iraqi ones. So, so every segment is represented. They're already, so, and they're here in Mayor. So it's, it's pretty, pretty special. I feel pretty, pretty good about it. Okay, the reason I'm here is to, we have gone to the county and we've requested of the county that we wish to put in equipment. We have, we don't know, Sheriff, this is the equipment that we can pick up. We've got helicopter, we've got a tank, we have a holocar, we have a Jeep. We have since moved this Jeep. We don't like, we don't like this Jeep. He's, he's in the vision of the memorial from, from here. So we don't want anything interfering with the vision of the memorial from the parking lot. So we're gonna, he's, he's gonna move if we get a Jeep, and we've identified a spot right over here for him. These pads maybe are bigger than they need to be. So once we have secured a, a vehicle, a tank, we're going after a tank. Probably first off, or whatever, whatever we can pick up. Then we'll bring it in. Of course, at that time, we'll get measured, and then we'll place it. That doesn't, we won't build a pad until we have the equipment, so that we know where we want that equipment to go. Now with also in doing that, you can see we have got a sidewalk going here. This goes up to the trail. We have, we have seen that there's activity walking down through that little shallow area. And we want to, we want to avoid that because if it is wet and then it, it muds up the cement area here. So let, we said, let's put it in there. And the parking lot is right there. The parking there is both of the memorial and back over here. Right now, we're seeing that the, both parking lots are used for bicyclers for the trail. There's probably as many in here parked as there are over in the trail parking lot. And I've seen it the other way, where people looking at the memorial, park over here, walk down to there to look at the memorial. So, so we, we've, we ask if that would be an okay thing, and they're okay with it. The commissioners have approved the plan like we have it here. Now, the one other thing, when Highway 25 was redone, they put an indentation in here. That's a bus unloading area. We had requested that and, and men that listened. So we were, we were surprised when it came. Although I believe what helped is when I spoke with the person, with the gal, I said, "Right now, we're driving the buses in and we're backing them out on Highway 25." "Oh, you, you can't do that." So our bus parking came in right here. Of course, right now, when you unload there, there's no sidewalk there. And it's, that isn't, that isn't a safe way for really unloading onto the grass. So we asked if we could put the sidewalk in here. This would mean cutting this curving out so that it could be handicapped right away also. Here's where you guys come in. We'd like to see a sidewalk all the way along here. We, as a committee, can help out some. We don't want to foot the whole bill on it. And I think, I did not check with the county, but I think the county or the Parks Board could possibly be on board with something like that, too. We'd have to go and see once what their thoughts might be. This area right here, that sidewalk right here is, is pretty doable. It wouldn't take a whole lot. Dave would be able to tell us about that. Andrew has looked at it. In fact, we're meeting with Andrew tomorrow.
That's right.
Over here, this sidewalk here, if you were to do that, is a little bit more of a challenge. What I have seen happening is people are walking across from downtown Mayor, coming by the park area, probably right over here, and they're walking down our drainage ditch over to the lumberyard. I have seen it a number of times as I've been there. So this would be, you know, the, the ideal, the safe way, the, for, for doing it. So the other thing that we need to do, if we're going to be putting these pads in here, we're going to put sidewalks in that are going to connect it. Our drainage right now, from this point around is surface drainage. If we start putting a sidewalk in here and one over there, we're going to block our drainage. So we have requested that we be going with a drain tile of some sort that's going to be going around and back of the monument. And this is where Andrew is, Bolton and Mank are coming in because Andrew did this drawing for us. We've talked about Andrew, buddy. Andrew was the one that helped us design the area, laid it out at the get-go. So, so we're looking to put a drain tile in there that can tie in because we've got tiling underneath the garden area here. So this area is all drained, drained well as far as the, the gardens are concerned. So that's, that's pretty much what the, the print would be showing is what we're looking at, at doing. Oh, I, I don't know if you're drawing, can you, can you bring the drawing down a little bit? We, we're looking at a storage shed back here. Right, right back here is where we've got our electrical. We have our meters and electrical hookup. This is the electric that we have on the flags back here and the electric on our parking lot light pole. So, and, and then also we have the electrical that goes to our slot lights that are underneath the benches here. We're looking to, the reasoning for a storage area is if we implement the Soldier of the Month with the flag flying thing, we would have families that would be there for the ceremony, which we'd probably need someplace up to about 20 chairs every, every occasion, and a bit of a podium. And we're looking at a speaker system, too. So, and so the storage shed is, would house some of that stuff. We also are accumulating stuff. There's times we gotta go out there and sweep the sidewalks and whip a bit. The county does pretty well with keeping the grass cut. That's the contract we have. The county takes care of the, the grass cutting there. But we still have a little touch-up stuff to do, and it'd be nice to keep a few pieces of equipment in there. And this is, we've been struggling with how to handle that. And we've accumulated some other stuff as far as the museum case in, in the center is concerned. And it'd be nice to be able to have that in a central area, so.
What size shed are you looking at?
What's that?
What size shed?
Probably an eight by 10, maybe, maybe a 10 by 10. We, we were in that area someplace. Good. Any, any thoughts or questions?
I think it looks great. I think it's a great plan, a great idea. And certainly, whatever we find out on the sidewalks, as you work with Bolton and Mank on those front ones, keep us posted on some of that. Or Maggie, if you can work with them and see what the costs would be on those, so at least we have an idea of what we're up against.
Okay.
It's wonderful. Is there any way to, to track how many people visit it annually, or you really can, can you?
It's, it's tough unless you physically sit there and, you know, if you could sit there for a week and, and then, you know, and say, this is, you know, multiply it by 52 then, and go, that could possibly be a way. I just know there's, there's, there's activity.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I, I drive by there and, and activity from, from the trail because often you'll see the bicyclers up, up there by the, so it, it works. We, on the 17th of September, we had a history day down here. We bought, we brought in World War II reenactors from a, an engineer combat group. And so we, we set up displays. In fact, we, we also brought in a 1980 record, tank retriever record that we had for display. And, and the reenactors wore the uniform, and they had all kinds of stuff. They had their collections, rifles, canteens, mess kits. We had about, about 200 people that came for that day from, from, we had it from about one to six. And we were trying it out just to see how, how it would go. And we had a bunch of school kids come down, and it, it went over pretty good. So it was sort of, sort of neat, so.
That's great. I think this would be a great addition. I like, I like the new phase that you're moving into, and the additions to it looks great.
I like it. I like driving by it and seeing it.
The, the, the night vision is, is the awesome one, isn't it? Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, keep us posted as things go on, as the sidewalk stuff, we can start getting some initial numbers on maybe what it would be to look at sidewalks going across the front.
Yep, yep.
It'd be worth looking into. And if there's ever anything you want, need any support, when you go to the county or anything, certainly let us know. I'd be willing to, to go down there during the meetings if you need it. Keep us posted.
Been very workable.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't, I haven't had.
Doesn't surprise me, yeah.
Since we've got it up, we haven't had, had any, really had, had any issues.
Good.
Our working relationship's been very, very good with them. So just a couple of announcements. The Legion Post, which I'm also a part of up in New Germany, is having a birthday, October 20th, and there's a speaker and a dinner, so something you can keep in mind. And then also, November 11th, we'll be having a, the Veterans Memorial Service, or not a memorial service, let's say, Veterans Day up at Lutheran High School. It's a, it's a morning event with a speaker, and then all vets and their, their spouses get a free lunch afterwards. So it's, we usually have, oh, four, 500 people that usually attend to that. So it's always something, well, Mike, you've been there over the years, so.
Right.
Yep. If you, if you have some interest and want to stop by and, it's welcome.
Can you just make sure Maggie gets all the details?
Will do.
So I'm aware, yeah.
Okay, okay. Any, any other thoughts or questions?
No, that's great.
Good?
So thank you, and thank the entire committee for us, if you could. I appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Stan.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, Maggie, let's move to 782, a recognition plaque for the fire station.
All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, this evening, you are being asked to discuss the recognition plaque for the 2021 Fire Station Project. The recognition, a recognition plaque is typically a metal plaque with names listed on it, recognizing generally the city council, commission, staff, volunteers, et cetera, that have put significant time into the planning and approving of the project. So I did originally put together the recognition plaque, and I asked the architect and contractor if they would donate it to the project, and they agreed. I did seek input from many different people for the plaque. I did order it. It was a lengthy process with a lot of discussion. So ultimately, I did choose the fire chief, the chief too, fire station committee, city staff, the architect, the contractor, and the 2020 City Council. I chose the 2020 City Council based on 18-plus meetings that they had worked on the project from at least May 2018 to December 2020. I know there were way more meetings than that. Those were official city council meetings. There were other open houses. And I know council attended some of the committee sessions as well. But I know that this project goes back further than May 2018. So with that, I did choose not to include the 2021 City Council because of the project and financial approvals did happen in 2020. I'm not saying that the 2021 council did not, was not involved in this project. They did approve the selling of the final bonds at the second meeting in January. However, the decision to sell the bonds for the project were made in, by the 2020 council in December. So based on that, that's why I put the, a plaque together the way I did. So, based on that, that's why I put the, a plaque together the way I did, which is up here. So, again, the plaque was ordered a little over two weeks ago. Since then, I did have a council member reach out and state that they disapproved with this decision not to include 21, 21 council. We did discuss kind of the hit, the rationale behind my decision. However, there was no agreement on how to move forward. So, I am bringing this to City Council to discuss. And if we want to change this plaque, we can. I'm just looking for guidance on how to move forward.
Looks good.
Could you scroll to see the bottom? And you said this was donated, shared between Brunton Architects and Engineers and BCI Construction?
Yes.
Maggie, I can't see whatever you're showing.
Oh, it is, let me email it to you. It's, it's, it's a basic plaque that just has the names of the city council from 2020, the fire chief, chief two, Fire Station Planning Committee, city staff, and the architect and contractor. It also thanks the Mayor Fire Relief Association for project donations.
Can you send it to her?
I will send it to you right now. Hold on.
Is that the Brian that quit? Or is that the one that works for us now?
Well, that's you, he works for us now.
But he was hired after, right? So, you're recognizing 2020 people or?
Brian was hired in 2020.
He was?
In fall of 2020. So, again, I'm not, like, there's a lot of people that worked on this project and I'm, I know we cannot recognize any, everybody. I just want to know, like, I, I'm trying to involve, I, my rationale was to put the people that had spent years on this. I don't, I, I put a lot of thought in it. That was my rationale, but I just, I'm looking for a direction on how to move forward.
Did you email it to Peggy?
I'm working on it.
All right. It takes a second to do that so she can at least see it.
I don't know, it looks good to me. Looks very nice.
All right, Peggy, it's coming. So, I, I'm really looking for discussion because I, I really need to know how to move forward with this.
If there's a change, if we decide on a change tonight, what will that mean with this one then? How are we, from a donation standpoint then, will the city just cover the costs of this?
The city would, would cover the cost of this one and then we would have Brunton and BCI cover the new one.
And what was the cost of this?
It's a little under $1,000.
Scroll up, Maggie, would you please? So, it's not going to have the dedication date?
No. The dedication is, no, we're just doing, the plaque is simply just recognition in this case. I looked at other plaques and I, again, every city recognizes people differently, so it's really up to us how we want to do it. If the recognition or the dedication event is important enough that we think it should be on there, then we can, we can do that as well.
Yeah, the ones I looked at, they had the dedicated date and then the, the council that served or sold the financing. And then they also recognize the current fire department staff.
It does recognize the fire chief and chief two.
It just said, it said something to the effect of all the fire past and present, just a little small sentence.
Are, are you looking for like a vote on this one or a change? Or are you looking for?
I'm looking for, I guess, I'm looking for if any changes need to be made or if this one is fine the way it is.
Do we physically have this one, it's been made?
It's been ordered. I haven't gotten confirmation that it's been made yet. We ordered it about three week, like, two and a half weeks ago.
Chance it's made.
We were hoping to have it made for the dedication event, which, when this was made and approved by several, you know, I've sent it to the contractor, the architect, the fire chief. We didn't know the dedication date at the time, so.
Well, I think it was a great thing. I think you put a lot of time and effort. I agree that the, the 2020 council spent years doing this project. We spent countless hours going through and combing through all the details. I understand that the 2021 council has done change orders and the bonding, but if we had never approved the building, we would have never had to actually approve the bond payment. So, I feel that it's not worth additional city money to redo the plaque. I feel that the right people are mentioned correctly on the plaque. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plaque that was.
As presented?
As presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the plaque and hang of the new fire station as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that it, it's a shame that there's two people on there that don't even live in the community anymore. There's also two people on there that voted, one voted no on every single item and they're being recognized. And the other one voted no when it came to how much to spend on it, but, and they're being recognized, so.
I, I just want to make an, like, a, say something to that. So, city councils, as you know, work together whether they vote, you know, this project is based on a quorum vote. So, whether or not they approved of this project in some capacity or another, they were still part of the council at that time.
Sure, I was just saying in effect.
Okay, I, I'm just saying, like.
And I also understand that if, if there wasn't, you guys wouldn't have had so many meetings if there wasn't so much bickering and picking the thing apart. I mean, I read all the minutes of 2020 and it was work session after work session because of the discrepancies that they came up with. I mean, even, even during the lame duck session, when there was a, a special council meeting called on December 28th to approve the bid and the pre-sell of the bonds, I think that should have been something that could have carried over, like basically the street reconstruction. But that's all I have to say.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to use the recognition plaque as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries for one with Melander being a nay. With that then, Maggie, let's go to 7B1, Street Projects, 71A.
All right, Mayor Dodge and Council in front of you this evening is a short update on the 2021 Street Project, as well as the steps that are needed, that need to be taken as we approach closing out the project. So, in your packet, you'll see the final, final numbers per bid and the feasibility study that was done last year. Let me zoom in quick. Just to go over those numbers, in 2020, when we were doing a feasibility for this project, we, it came in at an estimated $1,486,000. And then per the bid that we put out, it came in at about $1,236,000. So, this evening, you're being asked, oh, sorry, as, so as the project comes to an end, the assessment portion of the project does need to follow a process and residents need to be informed of their potential assessment based on that final bid number. And they do need to have the ability to provide, to provide feedback and comment in a public hearing. So, this evening, you are being asked to approve two resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution 10-11-21-36. That would order the compilation of the assessment rule for 2021, for the 2021 project that is in your packet, the preliminary assessment that is. So, with that, the city administrator and city engineer are recommending approval of this resolution. That would declare the costs to be assessed for the project and that would direct staff to prepare and finalize that role for the project per the city's current policy. The second resolution is Resolution 10-11-21-37, and that would approve setting the public hearing date for November 8th, 2021. That resolution directs staff to send invites to the impacted residents for the 2021 Street Project and invite them to the public hearing. It also provides their assessment numbers based on city policy. So, the city administrator and city engineer are recommending approval to set the public hearing to November 8th, 2021. With that, we are available for any questions. Dave, if you want to add any additional information, otherwise additional information was provided in your packet.
Yeah, I guess the, what I would just say in addition to that is, this is to a certain extent like setting your preliminary levy, right? So, this is setting the proposed assessment, this, the notification's going to go out. You have a proposed assessment rule in your packet. Final assessments won't be set until the assessment hearing, after you've had a chance to hear and get input from the public. That's the point at which you'll make the determination of the final amount to be assessed. So, I just wanted to point out that generally speaking, this is, once you set this, you can't go higher, but you still have the ability to take input into consideration if you wanted to make adjustments. The other thing I would just point out with the resolution stating the cost, that it also sets the payback period at 15 years and a interest rate of 3.45, so, which are terms for you to set. Again, I would say, once, once you make this notification, let people know that that is what your intent is. It would be difficult to lower the payback period or increase the interest rate. But again, based on input you receive, you would still have the opportunity to make adjustments to those numbers if you so choose.
Is there normally an interest rate?
Yes. Usually it's based on what the city borrows the money for or the interest rate that you borrowed the money, plus a percent, percent and a half to cover your administration cost of basically providing the financing for the project.
Say that again on the number of years. You said we can't go, if we approve it at 15, we can't go down to 10? Or can we?
Well, I, I would say you can. You would be setting the expectation that they're, that the property owners aren't going to have 15 years to pay it off. I would say that if you're unsure about the 15, I would start, I'd recommend you make it 10 years, hear input and make an adjustment to prolong that period versus shorten it. I, I think just the expectation would, I think you'd be setting an expectation at 15 years if, if you intend to consider something less, then you probably should start there.
I don't recall, ours was 10 years. I do recall, interest rate, I don't remember what it was, but I don't.
I think we had 15 years though.
Oh, mine was 10.
All right, any other?
I celebrated when I paid the last.
还需要更多信息关于这个
So, if it was passed, like, what, what, what would they be paid back? What would it, the total cost be on that $22,615.27? What would that owner be paying?
Does that include interest?
Are you saying on an annual basis?
Well, just the overall or annual.
W, I'm sorry, which, which property were you looking at?
The first one, Nick.
Yep, so the total assessment, $22,615.27 to be paid at the time it's assessed or over a period for you to set with interest?
15 years at 3.45?
Yep. Again, as it's proposed in here. Maggie, do you recall what the city borrowed? What percent?
I don't know it right offhand. But yeah, this was the, this was the, the 15 and then this payback interest rate was part of when we, it was in the packet and the financial advisor did provide that at the time when we borrowed the money. So, we're just going based on the information that when we bonded, this is the information that we used at that time or what we were planning for. Again, not that that can't change.
So, this does not include the interest if, if the homeowner decided to?
It does not. The interest gets added every year.
And those numbers are straight from our policy, correct?
Yep, this is actual cost and then applying the policy. If you recall, you've been given some various options to look at if you want to consider making adjustments. The intent would be that we would have, between now and that assessment hearing, we would have a workshop to kind of just talk through the numbers in a little bit more detail and, and I guess revisit those options just so that you're at least prepared going into the assessment hearing. Again, based on the input you hear, based on decisions or projects of the past, how, how this may apply or not apply, what, if any adjustments you want to make.
So, we.
This, this is what we would propose sending out for notifications.
And then, yes, we will be, we did plan on having October 25th as a, providing different scenario information so that you could take that into consideration when you get feedback on November 8th.
Any other questions? With that, then I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 10-11-21-36, declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation and proposed assessments for the 2021 Street Project.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and McNeil, he has a second. Any further discussion? And, and are we leaving it at the 15? It, it was at 15 years, then I'm assuming, correct?
It, it was when we did the initial.
All right. The only other thing I would ask, Maggie, before the work session, could you add a column onto the, and, and let us know what the initial number was that we first projected, that we sent to the homeowners and what we thought they were versus now that we know the numbers?
Yes.
Yep.
Preliminary, whatever it was a year ago or, or close to that? Just to see how that fluctuated since we've now have the project completed and everything.
Yeah.
I want to say it was close to 6,000.
Yeah, I was going to say it's, it's five, $6,000 a property. I mean, and just kind of you can see by, you know, the, the feasibility study had estimated assessing 594,000, 900, 595,000 about and versus 475,000 actual.
And I think if you go 15 years instead of 10, since this project was a little bit more, it might make it a little bit easier for people yearly to make.
And I agree with that. I just don't want to lock in the resident, the residents decided, hey, we want to do 10.
And is there a penalty to pay it early?
No, no, actually you do, you do have the ability to pay it off before the project is assessed. And then each year, you have the ability to pay it off before, before a certain date, before interest hits again.
And I think that's a good point that Nick, anyone can pay it off in 10 years if they wanted to then.
Right.
So, I'm not at a concern now. So, thank you for bringing that up. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 5-0. Then if we could, I'll look for a motion, unless there's any other questions, the next resolution, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 10-11-21-37, approving November 8th as the date for the public hearing on the proposed assessments.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 5-0. Then, Meg, if we go to 7B2, the restoration of the wetlands.
All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, this evening, I will be providing a short summary of the wetland project. All right, Mayor Dutch and Council, this evening I will be providing a short summary of the wetland project. That has been in progress since 2013. If you're not aware of where it is, it is to the east of the Veterans Memorial off of Highway 25. So the wetland project has been a joint effort between the neighboring property owner Joel Vincomyer and the City of Mayor. It was initially started as a way to alleviate stormwater issues within the city. The project was approved as well with the understanding that someday the project would create wetland credits that could be sold to fund the project costs over time. So over the year, the project, over the years, the project was initiated and now it is nearing completion. It's been about eight, eightish years. So as far as the wetland credits go, since it is nearing completion, we're working with the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil. This is the entity that, that regulates the wetlands. And when an entity creates wetland, you need to certify it and then that area can be designated wetland if, if it meets all the qualifications. And then can be sold to other entities in the state of Minnesota to help mitigate authorized wetland impacts. So again, pursuant to the original agreement and amended agreement with Vincomyer or between Vincomyer and the City of Mayor. Most of the completed work is, is done as far as the restoration of wetlands. With the end of it completing, we can start the process of selling the credits. And generally, wetland credits are sold over time and therefore funds for the entire wetland will be received in state, on a staggered timeline. Once they are sold over time, and this could be a few years. Dave might know a little bit more about that than me, but it's, it's a year, or it's a few years long process. So with that partnership, however, Vincomyer did request a lump sum. He expressed interest in receiving compensation for the wetland credits that he's entitled to pursuant to the agreement. The lump sum would be a total of about 207,929.78. This is actually a 20% discount on the current value of his credits. The benefit to the City of Mayor agreeing to the lump sum is that it would reduce administrative time. And costs associated with selling and splitting the credits as a partner over time. So there's a lot of administration that goes in that is involved. And if you can make it one entity, which would be the City of Mayor, it would just make the process easier instead of negotiating or figuring that out over time. Otherwise, that is the process that we would take if we didn't do the lump sum. We would, every time we sold credits, we would go through that process of splitting them according to the contract. So final steps right now to be considered moving forward as we finalize this project. Vincomyer, we need him to execute and record a conservation easement on the, on a form. That's required by the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. Vincomyer and the City of Mayor will grant one another perpetual drainage and utility easements related to the restoration of the wetlands. Also identified in the original agreement. And the City of Mayor needs to determine if it'll agree to pay the lump sum to Vincomyer in that amount. And take on this, moving forward, be the sole entity of this project. So financial, with, with the review with the city's financial advisor, we don't currently have enough money in our stormwater fund to pay that lump sum. However, the city can choose to borrow money from other funds to then pay those funds back over time. So when we sell those credits, we will get that money back and we can replenish that fund over time. The, the funds that we do borrow from, we would set up a payment schedule with the financial advisor. And we would pay that fund back with interest. So at this time, I am recommending approving and in your agreement. Or in your packet, there is the second amended agreement for the restoration of wetlands. This connects to the original agreement and the amended agreement between the City of Mayor and Joel Vincomyer. This highlights the steps that I just mentioned that needs to take place. And it's an agreement that Vincomyer will certify and sign the documents that he needs to sign. And then the city also needs to decide how we will, if we will move forward with the lump sum payment. If we do, we do have language in there that says subject to the condition, press, uh, subject to the condition precedent of certification. So we do need to verify that the wetlands get certified after he signs the agreement. Then we shall pay no later than December 31st, 2021. So there's a, it's kind of a balancing act, we need him to do his part. It takes time to certify the wetlands. And then when we have confirmation that it's certified, we can then make that payment.
For some reason, the certification doesn't go through, then the payment doesn't go through, obviously.
Right. We don't have any reason to believe that the certification won't go through, we just need to initiate the process and confirm it before any payment is made.
So we'd be saving like $40,000 if we do the lump sum, roughly?
We would be, yeah, so he's giving us a 20% discount. Again, his intentions are to, he wants to separate from the project right now as well. Just because he knows, we both know that this selling wetland credits will take time. Dave, I don't know, it's like, you can only sell so much each year, there's regulations. And so it could be, could be years and he.
It'd take several years for us to sell.
To sell them completely.
How many credits do we have?
So the city has over six acres for, that, that we have to sell on the Vincomyer property. It's a little over two acres. So the idea would be is if we make this lump sum payment, we, we basically take control over the whole bank, the whole, what is it? Nine plus acres that then we would sell and reimburse ourselves. One, for the cost of, that we're paying for the credits on Vincomyer property. But then really this has been a project that has stretched years and years and years and years. That has, you know, construction costs associated with the wetland restoration, but also storm sewer infrastructure. And so right now, at the $2.25 a credit, which sounds like it, that maybe at the low end of what they're going for right now. But our credits would be probably worth around $600,000 just for the city share.
Right, because I remember when we went through this whole process, this was the end goal. I know that the county had come in and asked to purchase the credits or wanted rights to the credits before they were certified at a lower rate. We, I remember the council vote said, no, we're going to wait till the project's certified and sell on our own. So we could make sure we got back our full investment into the project.
Yep.
That was just me trying to remember history.
This has taken a long time, but yeah, you know, compared to, I would think just in 2019, our cost estimate. We were estimating those credits to go at a $1.75 a square foot. So they're, they've gone up 50 cents a square foot since, you know, just over the last couple of years. Now, it's all subject to the market and the supply and the demand. So that, you know, at some point they could go down if the need's not out there. Right now with development going as it is, there's a, there's a demand for these kind of credits. And that, like you had said, that was always, the end goal is this was a way to finance storm water improvements that we were in need of.
Yeah, we had to make these improvements and this was a way to be able to pay for it in the future.
And once it gets certified, then we're good to start selling credits, correct? Okay.
2.4 acres equals the 207,000 dollars?
Yes. No, no. This work is a little complicated. The 2.4 acres was the minimum he was guaranteed because it's based on the amount of vegetation and the quality of the wetland restoration. His actual credits, I believe, are 2.8 is what the, is what the calculation is based on.
Even though the agreement and contract says 2.4?
I believe the agreement says a minimum of 2.4.
At least 2.4 wetland credits?
Yep, at least.
All right, any further questions for either the city engineer or Maggie?
So he can sell them individually though, we don't have to sell them for him, right?
No, we, oh, I'm sorry, no, you go.
Uh, no, our agreement with him was that the city would be the administrator of the bank and we would sell the credits. And we would have to reimburse him, I believe, is the way that was originally set up. That it wasn't two separate banks, that it would be one bank.
And then, right, and then we would, whenever they're sold, we would split it based on the algorithm that was approved.
Show me where that's at, I don't remember reading that. And we're going, where are we getting the money to pay this off at, what'd you say, Maggie?
So I have been working with the financial advisor. And so we are going to put together a payment schedule that will pull from our other enterprise funds, the water. Either all of the water, all of the sewer or both. And then we will reimburse it over time when we get the credit money back. So we will have a record that shows what we borrowed and what we'll pay back to those accounts with interest.
Is there something else you wanted to see in there, Larry, did you ask?
So that, what the agreement says is that Vincomyer will receive at least 2.4 acres, so on and so forth. And the city will be responsible and do all things reasonably necessary for obtaining the wetland credits for Vincomyer, including but not limited to application.
We got a heck of a deal, he paid 580 for the, the property in 2011.
The, yeah, so I can go into the longer history if you would like. There, there is no credit, there are no question that the property owner is getting a heck of a deal. The question for the city has always been, it, how is, what is our deal? And our deal was that we couldn't do this project without his cooperation. And it made more sense at the time where we were negotiating versus trying to figure out and, one, he was not going to sell us an easement. And it, the whole time, what he wanted was his value of those credits. And for us, the financing and the kind of the dollars and cents made sense because it was a way to pay for improvements that we needed. So there's no question he's getting a great deal. But the city is getting improvements that you would otherwise had to figure out a different way to pay for, fully funded by this deal.
So you think the credits will, will stay, like, they won't decrease too much?
No indication that that's going to happen right now. I'm just looking at here.
Is the bank, is it agriculture or is it the normal one? With what our bank is in?
I couldn't tell you. Looking here, because Maggie, I think we, we, we have a potential buyer out there and I was looking for Mark Chellagh's email.
Yeah, we do have interests already. But again, we can't really pursue that until we have all of this sorted out first.
I, I think that, I mean, I'm just from being with the project from the beginning. You know, it was, it benefited the city to do it the way we did it. Because there was a lot of things that we weren't be able to do that we had to take action on with the stormwater coming out of Hidden Creek.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, we, we had severe flooding issues on the south part of town. But ultimately, this was kind of a link in the system that needed to be addressed to, to alleviate that, that flooding. And again, this, this gives, gave us a way to, to pay for it. Again, 100% acknowledge, this is a really good deal for the person that's giving us this easement. But it wasn't a bad deal for us.
No, it wasn't. That's one thing, and that's one reason why we're waiting to sell the credits till now, because they did go up in value from when the conversation was years ago.
Any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the second amended agreement. To pay cash to Joel Vincomyer of 200 and $7,929.78.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, city council reports. Larry, anything you report on?
No, the planning commission was canceled again.
All right, Nikki.
Uh, we actually had an EDA meeting, Chad and I both attended it.
Yep.
It, uh, it was a good conversation. We talked about some American Rescue Plan Act funds that could be coming for the city and just kind of talking through some of that. The other thing was, we started a discussion on the old fire station property. And we kind of came to the conclusion that we would like to maybe go out for an RFP. But I think that's going to come to council at a later date. Because that would allow us to possibly sell the property, but have a little bit more control over what actually goes into that space. Do you have anything else, Chad?
Nope, you pretty much covered it.
Anything else to report on, Chad, or is it?
Uh, no, park board tomorrow night, so.
Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
No.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Need me to stick around for the work session?
I don't think so, Maggie. No, I don't think so, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Lucky, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
All right, Maggie, are you ready? Is there anything you need to?
Uh, no, I'm good.
And we will call the workshop meeting to order, start with the 2022 enterprise budget.
All right, so both of these items on the workshop kind of go together. My first discussion, and this is part of our budget schedule, is to review my preliminary enterprise fund budgets for, operation budgets for next year. So as you know, in 2018, we did a utility rate study based on future projects that would, needed to be covered with storm or for water sewer and stormwater systems. As you know, most of our operations for our enterprise accounts or our enterprise, yeah, our enterprise accounts come from utility rates and billing. So for usage of those who are connected into the system. So to pay for future projects and maintain the cost of day-to-day operations. We have been over the, since 2019, we have been approving rate increases of 3% based on that study. So for the years 2019, 2020, and 21, we did approve 3% increases. The year 2022 is still under discussion, we'll talk about that next. And so what I wanted to do is get in front of you the numbers that I've put together as far as operations for next year. That includes debt payments. And then have any discussion, if anything stands out to you or any questions you have, I will be available to answer them. I won't go into too much detail, it's, all of it's included in your packet. But again, this is preliminary, I'll go into more detail at a later meeting. I just, this meeting is essentially just to cover kind of any preliminary questions as we work through this. As you can see, the water fund debt has gone up. That is because we did the projects in 2020, 2021, and those payments are starting to come due in 2022. And then a lot of the data as far as utilities is based on history or the last three years. And then, a lot of the data as far as utilities is based on history, or the last three years. And then also...